I'd like to why that one stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
In your last meeting, I had a little argument.
I did too.
In my fear, you know, just like I was a little.
Little.
Yeah, I did.
Did it say anything?
No, no, I got up and walked out, but I had a little bit of, I mean, I had a little bit of. Could have been Earl's.
Corner.
Welcome, everybody. I know. To the December 21st meeting. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of December 7?
Second.
A motion, a second, discussion on the minutes. Hearing done, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Only discussion, I see Steve is out today, is everything okay? I think he called it. He's out.
Physical issues.
Okay, very good. Hope everything is well. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the holiday decorating contest, I really appreciate everyone's efforts and this year we even had some of the town staff got involved and help us to the finish line. So this year we've got, it's, it's, to me, I, maybe we have to do a better job of getting the message out, but you know, we, what can we do, social media, we do, and maybe, maybe we could put a blurb in our Parks and Rec brochure where it's way early in the year, but at least it could, it could prime people maybe to say, enter the decorating contest for the town of Elton.
Do a whole Christmas page.
Yeah, maybe a Christmas page. Yeah, and the Christmas page could even include everything that's happening in the downtown for that first variety and the, and the carriage, right? This is how we get better, right? And, and I'd like to really try to encourage the whole town. I tell you, there's, Earl actually mentioned a couple houses that we knew that was outside the town and, man, they did a nice job of decorating. There's a lot of beautiful decorating in the, in the town, but there's none of them sign up to winning grand prizes.
What do you think about having, opening, opening it up to water and sewer customers as well as town residents?
I think that would be a good thing. I think that would be.
How far, how far do we have to go?
Elkwood Estates and Holly Hall.
Oh, that's a, oh.
Yeah, actually the only two. I, I think that would actually be good and, and maybe we don't even, maybe our position should be, we don't have anyone that registers and we just go out and surprise them with the finest.
I like that idea. There's a lot of good decorated houses that are not in the contest because they don't know about it.
That's right. Now, the ones that were, they did a great job. But I'm here to award the winner, so. The home at 8 Pinehurst Court received a fourth place for the, from the town of Elton. 141 South Tartan will receive our third place. And 602 North Street will receive our second place. And the winner this year of the holiday decorating contest goes to 104 Park Circle. They will receive first place. So we've been very fortunate that Pat Select, Central Tavern.
Elkton Heights.
Enzos, Spork, Elk River, Palatine Page have giving, given gift cards to their places of businesses that we can award to the winners. And you know, the winner gets $125 in gift cards from those businesses. Second place was $75, third place was 60, and fourth place was 40. Pretty nice.
Very nice.
And really appreciate everyone for participating. In the years past, we issued, sometimes we've issued, town issued checks, but by going to the local businesses, we don't have to issue a check anymore, we just give those holiday cards to the winners. Works out pretty nice.
How can we thank the businesses, like, let them know, you know, we're recognizing what they did?
Maybe, maybe.
Is that on Facebook or?
You know what I'd really like to do is maybe you could create a proclamation for thanking them and then we can all sign it and we'll get it there. That would be great. Okay, Lou, you're up.
The first item I have is the discussion by the board to amend the contract for Waste Management to add an additional $80,000 to their compensation, annual compensation. I think this was a request by Paul Bean, Waste Management's president, or, you know, the manager, government manager. And there's been discussions up to this point about it, but the decision is now with the board about whether they want to do this or not.
Yeah, we, I actually requested Mr. Bean to put it in writing to us so that we could look this over. I've met a couple times with Dan Hanley talking about, you know, our, our future of collecting. It seems like everything is getting picked up correctly at this point. Is that any, I don't, Dan, is everything working out right now or no? Hiccup's back and forth, right?
Few, few hiccups.
Uh, but I'd like to wait until the first of the year and bring this up again if it's okay with the board.
That's a great idea.
Good, let's, let's digest it another couple weeks and then we'll bring it up at the first meeting in January. That's good with everyone.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Lou, the next item.
Next item is the, I can't see it too well, I thought I had it closer. That's the concept plan for the South Street extension. Deviated from the original concept because this will actually connect East High Street with Stockton and will tie Bethel into it also, so that comes real, real close. Now, I think a copy of the plan went out to the board, but I didn't get a response one way or the other from the boards, I didn't know if you had any issue with that concept or not. Trying to get rights of entry, we have, I think, only two so far out of the, I think there's 11 owners of 22 parcels. And actually, I need those rights of entry so we can do a survey to plot out that street and identify precisely what we need. Once we have that, then we can move to acquisition base. There'll be a lot of, lot of costs involved in that.
Lou, my, my, my first thought about this was that we would take South Street extended and take it directly into, it would go directly into the parking lot of the Board of Education. But after I got, gave it a little bit more thought, I think, I think your plan here is the correct plan. I think that by going and connecting into Stockton Street, we still have the entrance off of, I mean, that's the only entrance into the, into the complex, the community center. Is that correct?
Yes, the off Stockton Street unless they come through Boo Street. But the, I wanted to connect, because we're using public money, I wanted to connect two public roads, actually three, but Bethel, we can count that one. To have a contiguous pathway through there either way you go, so they can come out of there and go out of South Street also. But we have to buy parcels of land from Providence Church and I want to make sure that I had parking along that stretch between Bethel and High. That way the church, people going to Providence Church would have parking on both sides of the street there. Right now, they either are on East High Street or in the grass.
I, I think it's good that the folks from Bethel be able to go out South Street before you'd have to go out to Boo Street, is that correct, Charles?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so this gives, this gives a opportunity to come out the other way and maybe we can make some additional improvements on Bethel if need be. And the, the only other question I have on my mind is along Collins Avenue, I guess where Collins Avenue is currently, will that turn into parking?
Uh, no, it's not connected with this. Collins Street isn't connected to this street. But Collins is connected to Bethel.
So Collins is.
It won't be connected to this street.
So Collins, so you will not be able to turn onto Collins?
If you come down East High Street in front of the barbershop there, you can turn right onto Collins Street.
You can turn.
You could do that, you could do it even after this is built if you wanted to.
Okay.
Because you're going to stop to get down a one-way street, right?
Yeah.
Which way the traffic won't be coming in and out.
Either side should come in and out of the town.
We're trying to talk about that.
What about Stockton Street? I mean, we, at one point, we were talking about making that a one-way street. Have we decided on that?
No, there's no decision, it's a two-way street now.
Right.
I surveyed the residents before I would do that because it created an issue. Once we have this street done, it may be more feasible at that point because then you have access, you know.
I, I like the concept.
You have nowhere to go.
I like the concept. I'm still trying to figure out how you're going to have an entry to the properties that are vacant. Are you trying to sell those or are you waiting on somebody to say, come in and look, or what, what needs to happen?
No, I sent a concept plan, I sent a description of what we were doing to everyone we wanted to write as entry for. So what we did would happen.
What are you looking in return from them?
I'm sorry?
What are you looking in return from them? I know a guy that lives in Delaware and has a piece of.
Looking for a right of entry from them so we could do the survey. That's all I wanted.
Just permission to fill in the property?
The plan, we'll send it out to them, what we're going to do, and then we have to determine pricing for the, for the different lots. What do you there?
Could I do the survey again? Is that what you're saying?
Because, because what I'm saying basically, there's a guy that has a house on the old, no, I'm sorry, on Collins. He said he received something from the town, but because he doesn't live here, he just look like it's, it's not chalant as far as him either returning anything or even caring about it. So how do you take the place of somebody with that, with that desire to not be a part of it? And then my other question is, what about those people who lived many, many years ago, their DCs? They may have had someone who paid the taxes since that time, thinking as a lot of people have done over the years that, you know, the street comes through here only to get something, they may not get anything. So, you know, how do you handle those two instances?
If, if the property owners or landowners in that stretch of the road where it's going to be constructed will not sell the land to the town to build the road, then what are we going to do? I don't know if we can pursue eminent domain or not, but that, to defer to John or something like that, but that could be a very extensive process.
Okay, going back to answer the other question, how you dying, you pay somebody taxes and you think one day that somebody's going to hither or here come and buy it and, and basically, what happens to that person? Do they have any means of being charged?
Who'll offer money for their property? Not going to be free.
Yeah, whatever the.
Even eminent domain is a free.
Michelle, for instance, Russell, you don't remember her husband George, had property on Collins Street. And I think Georgeman did five years, other people probably did 20 or 30. Well, she's paid taxes on that property and had not received nothing, but yet when a tax bill comes, she received the tax bill to pay on that, but yet in your survey of sending letters out, she did not receive. I'm just wondering how that's going to work as well.
Well, I'm not exactly sure because the people who pay taxes for Collins Street, unimproved lot, went to Collins Street, that's how they retain ownership of it. If they didn't, it would go to a county tax sale, so they wouldn't own it anymore. Then I had to deal with whoever purchased that property under the tax sale. And once they propose on the right of redemption, then I deal with them. But right now, I think, I don't know who I'm going to deal with, with George School's property because he died.
Well, there's, there's a number of people like that, is what I'm saying, and I was just trying to get that some urgency to take care of it, but, you know, they just seem to be so harsh on them.
Do you feel like they need to feel confident that they'll be compensated?
Well, I always told them, it's like a sliver reply, you wouldn't be getting nothing if you got anything. So I don't know, I mean, if you share a dollar in the mail saying this is yours, if you do whatever, they may adhere to your request.
I don't know, we won't be bad, we'll, we'll have to have property appraised as its actual value.
But the, did the letter indicate?
Now, money to buy it.
Did the letter indicate to the property owner that in the future there could, there, you know, if, if we wanted, we would be making an offer to purchase, but they would be getting some kind?
When he asked for right of entry and explained the reason for the right of entry was.
So they're thinking, well, if I give you that one money, what do I get back?
You don't get anything for the right of entry.
Well, maybe they didn't understand what the right of entry was, it's just permission to come onto the property, right?
And so we can do a survey and explain that in the letter.
You did?
Have the right of entry to have our crew go on their property, sort of.
And I'm saying that comes to my mind that Bugsy Purvey, he owns a sliver of property on Collins Street. He knows a drunk driver, he's way up in New York, his sister didn't understand, that's what I'm trying to say.
One of the critical properties, or several of them, is Cherry Black, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she lets him in?
And she, she, I guess, talked to Michelle and said, she's selling that property, so I don't know who she's selling it to, because the GIS is what I go by and I don't have any information.
She owns it, but I think at this point, she thinks she's going to get a home run having owned, you know, those couple pieces of property.
Well, everybody wants something for.
I actually need that property.
Huh?
I need that property.
Well, everybody wants something for what they own, you know, that the town, the town wants to use it or take it or whatever. Just the idea that they know that they'll get, like you said, the market value, right?
Well, yeah, I, I think that we have all those pulled currently, right? All the assessments for all those properties?
Well, of course, they're Maryland Department of Assessments.
So what we may want to do is, is, we don't, we don't need to do it today, but I would say that if we had, if we could determine a value based on assessed value, if it's, I know it's a little, those lots, they're not paying anything on them.
Wouldn't be very much. The value's not going to be based on assessed value. The property's going to be, I mean, the value's going to be based on proper valuations done by.
Right, and that changes.
And we need to figure out basically square foot of property being, so, because presumably you're not going to take all of the prop, all of each of those properties, you'll take some portion.
Well, no.
So if they, if they're taking 52%, they're going to get 52% of the fair market value. And so you kind of have to have a ways to go before we get there, but we will at some point be doing some sort of a limited, I would suggest anyway, some sort of a limited title search to make sure that we catch the people that might otherwise fall for your tracks.
Lou, do you think we should start moving forward with that or do you think we're, that's?
Well, the reason I wanted the right of entry is to have the survey done as John mentioned. To know precisely which land and what land we need.
Perfect.
Because you're right, it may be 52% or 10% or 100%.
Yeah.
We don't know that yet.
And we, and I think everyone, even, even the folks that own those parcels down there, they're not, they're not conforming lots. Nothing there is conforming, you can't even, you can't even, you can't do anything.
Yeah. So, I mean, but would you feel more comfortable knowing that that's, that's the process somewhere like that?
I feel fine, I'm just trying to help us to get through whatever, because he said he did not have any response or maybe one or what happened, but there are a lot of people that actually live in, who are paying taxes.
Right.
Guy lives over there in the parking units over there. Two properties there that he, it was a long time ago, living there, his grandmother died, family continued to pay taxes, and he's paying taxes, you know, get rid of it.
Yeah, like Charlie, I hear you loud and clear, they might be happy just to say, take it. I don't want to pay taxes on it anymore. Okay. I think that's a, we get to right of ways and, and they'll get them surveyed and we'll have a better understanding.
Okay, I think we're on track.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is a proclamation for Edna Mae Brooks Piner. Shall I read that?
Yes.
Mayor Commissioners of Town of Elton, Maryland, Edna Mae Brooks Piner. Whereas Edna Mae Brooks Piner was born on September 17th, 1933, and departed this world on December 13th, 2022, my condolences to the Piner family. Whereas Edna was blessed with 12 children and a host of stepchildren, grandchildren, great-grandchildren and great-great-grandchildren, as well as many children she cared for who found a home in her heart. And whereas Edna shared her life with her community as well, including service as a member of the Elton Housing Authority. And whereas Edna truly recognized that a person's legacy is not measured in material wealth, but by her commitment to God, family, and to others. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Commissioners and citizens of Elton, we hereby extend our severe condolences to the Piner family as another angel welcome to heaven. Well, she has whom that I say heaven. And furthermore, under the authority vested in me as the mayor of the town, mayor of the town of Elton, I hereby declare December 24th, 2022, as a day of remembrance for Edna Mae Brooks Piner.
We have a motion to accept the proclamation. Second. A motion, a second discussion.
Can I third?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Louis. Okay.
Nice, Michelle, for reading that lovely document.
Very nice.
Thank you. Okay, I, I saw an email going back and forth. Lou, you sent an email to John about the Holly Hall property. I was going to call a closed session, but I don't know if we need a closed session in regards to that, as things moving. I know Cordish sent me a note the other day and it was like, where are we at?
Can I give you just a, a brief update?
Yes.
I think in our next, last meeting, I mentioned that the title search had been completed.
Yep.
And I have reviewed that, I have questions about that. Wendy, and I forget Wendy's last name, she's from.
Wed.
Yes, thank you. She and I are to meet next week to go through those things I had questions about. I think that I have figured out, and if you remember our prior conversation, based on some information you gave me, I think we found a, a path forward. It is not going to be quick and it's not going to be easy, but I think we have a path forward. And it is probably, of all of our several options, not a lot of options, but of all our several options, I think that path forward is probably the quickest and least expensive and gets us where we want to go. But I think we need to get through that before we acquire anything from Cordish because it's going to require that property that is not subdivisible to be subdivided. You know, we've got that historic easement that completes the subdivision. And so we've got, I think we've found a way to get around that. An ethical and legal way to do it, but it solves the problem, but it's going to take a little while. So I'll keep you appraised where, where we are on it.
Very good. Thank you, John. Okay, I wanted to announce that the Barper request for donation from nonprofits will start on January 1 and it will end on March 31st. And then I think we'll just go through the same process again, if it's okay with Gene and Rob. I think you guys, with staff, did the review and then you guys made the little check marks. Did everyone comply or didn't comply? It's in your guys' hands, if that's okay.
Yep.
We got it? Unless Charlie, if you wanted me to kick one of the two off.
No, no, they're behind.
All right. Earl, you have a problem with that?
Yeah, my pleasure, Earl.
I, I respect Rob, I'm not behind him.
All right.
Boy, you're getting good at that.
Very good. Listen, before we know it, next year's budget will be here. We'll start working on that probably in February or March after the holidays are all over and we get through the trips that the, the new governor's going in and I got a lot of, a lot of different things happening. But one thing that had, I actually had, not only one employee, but I had two employees kind of, and close friend employees kind of made a comment to me that we were talking a little bit about bonuses for the town and, and my response back to them, both of them, was one thing that the board had talked about was employee evaluations. And I, I just want to let everyone know going into next year's budget, I will not be putting any dollar value on any employees. Now, I love them, I love everyone to death, but I'd like to see 100% of the employee evaluations done. Would the board agree with that? I mean, we've asked and we want to see evaluations.
I think that's important.
I think so too. And Andy, I see you waving your hand, so maybe they're all done?
No.
Okay.
But thank you for saying that, Mayor, I think that's a wise decision. I do have a, a rough policy that I had put together, I've been tweaking it, that I'd like to share with the board maybe after the new year as a consideration that ties to just what you're saying.
Okay.
That whatever is decided between the board and the town administrator for any additional compensation, be it cost of living or merit, that it is part of the requirement is, is some evaluation is completed by the May before the new fiscal year begins.
Perfect.
So I do have something put together for you.
I'd love to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when you first came, evaluations should have been really behind, 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 direct.
When I first came, the beginning of the year, I sent notices out to all the directors on the anniversary dates for the employees and their, their suggested dates for appraisals. And it's been inconsistent, Commissioner, of those being received.
Okay. Thank you. We, we pulled it off the agenda until the first of the month, first of next year. But I want everyone to take a look at the, make sure you look, review the infomarc, scope of work, asking for a renewal. And I want everyone to take a look at that. I mean, it's, we also recognize that the cost of everything is going up, but please take a look at that because we do want to discuss this at our January meeting.
One other thing that I would emphasize there is that, that proposal is calling for additional staff. And in particular, and the board has to realize that we're taking well number four, which is critical to the town field, is not under their contract. So in order to be operated, it has to fall under their contract. And that, and that's a well is not something you turn on and off, it's a treatment system. So you have fully qualified people to operate it, so it's, that's why that proposal is very extensive and, and expensive because of the additional staff needed.
Perfect. All right, that's all I have to add. Robert?
The only thing I have is, I received a text message from Sam Buller asking that we continue our talks about funding the fire company further than what we already are. I talked with the mayor about that this morning, I promise I wouldn't bury myself, brought it up this morning. And we are in agreement that we really want to, because we're fully behind the fire department and EMS, but we really need to wait until some of these projects we have rolling on start generating income so that we can fund you like we want to, like we want to be. But it is going to take a little more time, you understand?
Well, it's just like your garbage collection, the prices are going up, so somebody's got to fund it.
Well, that's, that's correct. And.
Understood.
I would say that the ultimate goal, or my ultimate goal is, and I think the board's with it also, is we want to put it out for the taxpayers to vote on. And we'll put the scale together to where we think that it could be a well-funded tool. And I, I still, in my heart, believe that we're obligated. I believe that we're obligated as a town to fund this now. And we need to change our language. I started this, the discussion about the change in the charter, because a charter specifies fire and, and safety. You know, one thing it didn't say was, back when they wrote that, they didn't know we were going to have ambulances. I guess they were thinking, hey, we'll buy them a new horse, right? And that's how you get from point A to point B. But we recognize that those things have to be changed and it falls under that arm. And I, I, what I mentioned. And I, what I mentioned to Rob this morning, Mike, myself personally, and I mentioned it to you over coffee, I think, or we got sidetracked, I'd love to see, you know, we've got a lot of robust growth happening, and, but we haven't seen it, I'm looking at it right now. I don't see it on the revenue sheets. And I don't, I'm complex, I don't know why. I don't, I don't know if it's missing the filing deadline, and it's all gonna hit, if the, when we start to receive the numbers in April from the state, that's kind of my belief is where it'll be. But our real estate property tax number hasn't really moved, and I'm interested to see what it brings in March or April. And my belief is, it's gonna jump up considerably. So we've got a hundred million dollar project on one side, Muddy Lane, we've got another forty-five million dollar project that's under construction, and got a lot of, lot of action going on. So it's gotta affect the numbers at some point.
So you think that their donation is just gonna automatically increase because of the tax base?
Their donation, their donation will, will, I believe, in the next five years, double by what our charter says today. It's still not enough to.
Not enough.
Not enough. It's not enough.
And if.
We need to be at least a million dollars for the fire company somehow to fund it. And do you do that through a water bill? Do you do it by a tax rate currently? It's based on the tax rate, Lou, is that correct? And I think.
Because it's a general fund, it's tax, not.
Yeah, it's based on the tax rate, and, but I'd like for the voters of the town to vote on it. And, because I, it'd be easy, because I, if the money's there, it makes it easy for us to make that decision. If the money's not there, then.
Well, you're asking to vote on a charter amendment.
Charter amendment.
But if it fails, we need a Plan B.
We do need a Plan B, yep.
Yep. I mean, it's difficult, so.
So that's where I met Rob. You good with that?
That's all right, Sam.
There you go. All right, what else you have, sir?
That's it for me. I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
I would just recognize Mary's staff for having their dance recital, Christmas recital December the sixteenth, and also their basketball program is ongoing right now, the Christmas holiday. So they have their basketball program started, and that's, I'll get the numbers of how many teams after the first of the year.
Okay. Thank you. Charles?
We're doing the same, pretty much saying the same thing, I guess, down the road. Your town is gonna have to be involved and be answerable for taxes, for what we have now, and what's due to the comments, almost like saying the Plan B, what is that gonna be? We may not have the exact answer, but we put some direction, I guess.
Well, you know, I think during the presentations we've seen, I know it's increasing, but when you have twenty-five ambulance calls a day, and eight and a half square miles, and you, there's rules and regulations that they have to follow.
It's a challenge.
It's a challenge. Now, some of them, it seems like, Sagerly's been called as a transport ambulance service, which I think that that's something that we have to work on far above our level. We have to work on that at the state level or federal level to figure out how that all works. But we'll have, the nursing homes will call Sagerly for a ride to the hospital, still going on.
You're still getting a lot of that, Sam?
We still get a lot of it, but honestly, I mean, it's an inconvenience for us, but in the grand scheme of things, it really doesn't change the budget all that much, because those people have to be there, or they take Mrs. Murphy or that. And so it puts more workload, things that are gonna create more workload, for example, Southfield's gonna increase our buying calls by two hundred and fifty calls a year. That's an entire stack at Station Three and Route Forty. I have to be able to handle that. That call to Southfield's alone will be more ambulance and fire calls than most fire departments in the county run.
Now, how do you project that? Don't be understanding how that.
It's a percentage of residential population.
So it's all, it doesn't matter what quality of neighborhood, or?
No, we do tend, it does tend to be socioeconomic overlay on the whole thing. The higher the socioeconomic, the lower the calls go. But again, the difference between nine calls and ten calls doesn't really affect the budget all that much. But when you look at large chunks like Southfields, you know, Muddy Lane, those things have a significant impact on the number of calls. And then, of course, those things that help the tax base, the commercial properties like out on Two Seventy-Nine at the interchange, they create lots of calls.
Of course, we're hoping, we're really projecting that Southfield's is more than gonna pay for itself.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the transfer of, of the tax base that swings to Sagerly versus the two hundred and fifty calls, but I can tell you that it's gonna require a crew twenty-four hours a day to handle just Southfield.
Well, I mean, I really can't put that together. I mean, I, I'd like to see a heat map. You guys probably got heat maps of where you go.
We do, but the biggest one in the county is right where you're sitting.
In downtown?
It's right here, downtown Elkton.
Really? So how's our calls at Kensington Courts, for example?
I.
See, that's what I'd like to see, because I.
I'd be happy to share with you the heat map.
Yeah, I'd love to see that heat map, because I'd like to see how the calls in Patriots Clan and Kensington Courts.
I'd see that as well.
Yeah, downtown, we know. I mean, we have a lot of.
Can you share that, too, as like after the first of the year?
Sure. It actually comes from the county. The county actually doesn't matter.
Yeah, it'd be great for us to know. It'd be great information for us to digest, because then we can use that information and make our comments back to them.
Sure. Actually, I would suggest, rather than getting it from me, I would, I think it would be better if you went directly to the county and got it.
Very good. We got it.
It would be connected to the conversation.
Yeah, that'd be good. And, because I would think that the, it'd be nice to know, like the villages of Elk, I think that's what it's called, villages of the Elk Creek Apartments, Meadows, the Meadows.
Meadows.
Very good. Anything else, Charles?
Chief, do you have an instrument like that, that you can share to see, I guess you know, for us to know where most of our calls are based?
So we don't have, we don't have mapping capabilities, but I could, I could get the data for you.
That's great.
Or there, I could outsource it to somebody at the state that would do that for us.
I would love to see that also, and then maybe put the two on top of each other in some way, and see if it's somewhat related. It'd be, it'd be good information. And I'm sure it's done somewhere.
Are you trying to dispatch? That's how they do it. The address is better dispatched.
Yeah, I think that'd be interesting to do.
Yeah, and weekly, they do it through the analyst, the Sheriff's Department does it weekly for us. And we're always, Elkton's the hotspot, Manon County, there's no surprise there.
No question about it.
No.
Charles, anything else?
I wrote a couple condolences, once again, Earl, the Lord has seen normally through, and for everybody else that's sitting and online, Merry Christmas to you, and that's it.
Chief?
Speaking of the ambulances, I mean, I'm not trying, my, my house has probably been a hotspot. But since you're here, I want to tell you, we've called the ambulance before, but here of late, things have been rough. You have the best group of people, by far. They are so professional, they are so caring, and they're so good at what they do, from the time they walk in that door to the time they walk out. And you should be very, very proud of them. I feel so, one hundred percent at ease when they're, when they're coming, when they're there. And it's been invaluable to me and my family. So yeah, I support them a lot. So thank you. Please relay my deep gratitude to whoever's in charge, and how professional everybody has always been. I want to thank all our employees for a wonderful year. Every department, I can think of people that have stood out and done an excellent job or went beyond their normal job to, to make sure that the town is represented well, cared for well. Even when I walked in here today and I saw what one employee did to decorate the entranceway, you know, she didn't have to do that, but I think she loves the town and she loves the job that much, you know, to do it. And everybody, I mean, I could go on and on about each department, where, like you said, we had employees volunteer to go out and join the decorating contest, you know, and they weren't even people that live in town. They had to come from, you know, out of state to do it. What, Chief, what your people do on a day-to-day basis, we always appreciate it, but it's this time of year when family, and, you know, we're all gathered together, and we're so close that you realize how much you appreciate people. And I think all of us appreciate all the employees, and we do recognize when you go the extra mile. And I wish there was a bigger present we could give all, you know, to all of yous to thank you, but I just think it's been a great year. And I just feel like, because of the employees, the years just get better and better. So thank you.
We even had a non-employee that lives off Oakfield Point Road orchestrate the decoration at the Armory, is that correct?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I think it was the last meeting, but I meant to bring that up again. For people riding through town, they think we're really cool, you know, to do that. And it was all our, so it's always appreciated, and you make us proud, you really do, everybody does. So thank you and Merry Christmas. Uh, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Chief.
All right? We're not gonna be here.
Thank you. This is done in the meeting. We open up the floor for anyone in the audience that has anything to say for the good of the town of Elkton. Chief?
I would welcome the opportunity to tell you that I just learned that the county council is looking at, I think, seven different names for the Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee. They've not voted on it, but they did have a work session yesterday about it. So I have their buyers and their names, if you would like, I can share those with the board. And then I would welcome any feedback, but it's not really gonna help to give it to me, but if you have any feedback, obviously, you know, your constituents of the county are the ones that are gonna vote on it. So, and you guys are better connected in that area than me, and probably know more of the people on that list than I would, so I will share that with you if you would like.
Is the list public yet, or not?
I would say it's probably not public.
Okay.
I just don't, I just don't know, but I will share it with you.
Thank you.
And then, you know, if you can just.
Why don't you explain to the board what that board will do?
The Police Accountability Board, the way the legislation is written through Cecil County, is the Police Accountability Board will receive the complaints, and we have an online portal right through the town's website where they could do that and make a complaint against any of our officers. They would get that within three days after notifying me, and then we would start an investigation. So the Police Accountability Board, that's really all they do. They meet quarterly to make, and to make sure the agency heads get copies of the complaints, and then I think they file a report annually. The real work is done on the Administrative Charging Committee, because what happens is the, the agency is tasked with doing the investigation, like we've always done, and then we submit that to the Administrative Charging Committee. The Charging Committee looks at it, they have subpoena bounders, so if they're not happy with our investigation, or they just have some more questions, they can certainly come back, they can have the witnesses go before them if they want, and answer some questions, they can do body camera footage themselves if they want. So anyway, they make the decision on whether or not the complaint is sustained, or if it's non-sustained, unfounded, they make that determination. And then there's a, they also could make a recommendation on the punishment for the officer. Now, there is a state matrix that was created by the Training Commission, they were tasked with doing that by the legislature, so we have to stay within that. The chief has to take, you know, I can, I can go higher than their punishment, I can't go less.
Okay.
And then, and then obviously, if the officer doesn't accept that, there is, you know, trial boards and things like that. But that, the Administrative Charging Committee is required to do the training, and I believe it's a forty-hour training course.
Yeah, it is forty.
I think it's forty, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, if you have more questions about that. I haven't seen the process working yet, so I don't, that's not much that I know about.
Chief, emphasis here is the law enforcement officer of federal rights has been repealed, correct?
Absolutely. So essentially, yeah, the officer, if they get called to act to, by this Administrative Charging Committee, they have to respond, they have to answer any questions. You have a year, the way it's written right now, there's a year from the time the complaint is made, and it goes through the Charging Committee for, for the punishment to take place, if there is to be punishment.
A year.
So it's one year. That's, sounds like a really long time, but if you think that some of them could be criminal in nature, like if an officer is charged with something, and maybe it's criminal, too, you've got to allow for that criminal investigation to happen. And it's not ideal to have both running concurrent, because, you know, they're entitled to certain rights, too, just like any, anybody else, if they're accused of committing a crime. So that can be, that can be a little touchy. And right now, you've got some people, fortunately, we're not, no one from our agency, but there are some officers in the county, countywide, that are, have had complaints lodged against them, so they, their clocks already started ticking some several months ago, because this went into effect in November in July. So, there's, you know, there's concern, and we want to get it right, we want to do it right, you know, we want, we want to make sure that our officers are doing what they're supposed to be doing, when they're not, we need to hold them accountable.
I thought we were anywhere.
And we, we do, and we still are, just because there is not complaints lodged by the citizens internally, we're making sure, if we see something that isn't right, you know, we're giving it outside the Police Accountability Board. If it doesn't involve the citizen, we can do that. Sorry.
Chief, do you know when they're going to vote for the members of the board?
So I know they're meeting, I believe, in two weeks, but I don't know if they're voting then, maybe. And I didn't even know about the work session until yesterday, and it was yesterday. So I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but I just, the reason I'm late, one Wednesday a month, is because we have the Hert meeting and the Chief's meeting right before this, so I'm rushing from the county to get here. And so we just did that, so I got an update on exactly what kind of transpired last night. I think there's some confusion, at least the county attorney is the one who's kind of setting this up, and I think there might be some confusion where he believes that they're, they can be interchangeable, the people on the Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee, and that's just not true. And not everybody has to have to train, just the people that are on the Accountability Board. There's gonna be training for people that are on the trial board, which is when we'll have to get involved and send some of our officers, because on a trial board, an officer of each rank, it has to be on that board, so we'll have to make sure one or two from each rank are done for our training. So, I don't really know what the delay has been, I'm very frustrated by it, this should have been done a long time ago. And there are, we're one of eight counties that don't have it in place, but I just don't know why it's not in place yet. I want to make sure that background checks are done on people that are on these boards, but to my knowledge, they haven't been. This is where I kind of ask for your help, to make sure that these things kind of get done.
You can get those names and logos to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you email them to that to us?
Absolutely. So, and I'd go back and email this.
That'd be great.
And on a good note, our FOP, Shop With A Cop was canceled for this year, or I think it might be finished, actually. But our FOP decided that they were gonna kind of pick up. But our FOP decided that they were going to kind of pick up on a very small scale, um, in Elton, and they did. And so on December fifteenth, our FOP and members volunteered and did, um, Small Shop With A Cop and Mary allows to use the Neighborhood Community Center to do that. And we took five kids to Walmart and went shopping with them, came back and Henzo's donated pizza. And, um, we had a little pizza party for them. Our very, um, Mr. Santa, some of you might know him as Brian David, was there and took pictures and, uh, it was a really cool event. And, uh, I'm sorry that I didn't share that with you guys. So you could have been there, but if they do that in the future, I will definitely share it with you. So it was really cool. And basketball was going on too, so I think Santa had a few extra hugs in there, um, which was really cool too, but, yeah.
Do you have a picture of Santa that you could share?
I do. I think it was on our website, but I, I tried and sent one to you.
Yeah, I didn't know.
I'll send it to you.
Chief, is there any reason why the shop for a cop is, is.
Well, you know, that, I imagine that it was just so time-consuming and so expensive.
It was big.
It just got so big. And, uh, the only thing that officially was put out was, you know, they had their, even their initial goal. But I imagine that that, it was just so much. But we took, we took kids and not necessarily those that were, um, in town, but those that our police department dealt with over this last year. So it was nice.
When we're, when we're talking about police, one of the best, uh, pieces of technology that they use, I think, is body cameras.
Oh, absolutely.
Body cameras, uh, not only keep their, them on their phones, but when a citizen comes in and complains about an officer, they can pull up that video and in many cases extinguish any concerns they have because they have it on video.
Yeah. And that's really what we have done. We've had, I think, one or two of those where they come in and just sort of want to vet. And so, you know, we, we're following up with them and we're saying, okay, look, you know, you can come in, look at the, look at the body camera footage with us while we're reviewing it. And, and if you still want to make a complaint and think we did something wrong, we'll help you file that complaint. And that, um, that's Mr. Walter just shot at this point.
That's right.
He's on, so, um, so far, you know, that's, nobody's ever wanted to pursue it. And so they've been satisfied and, and we haven't found any violations out of the two that we've gotten. So, yeah, it's, it's been great.
Good. Thank you, Chief, for everything you guys do. All right, anyone else this evening? Andy?
Uh, yes, just to remind the board that, uh, January Maryland minimum wage goes up seventy-five cents. Uh, that's a six percent increase. Uh, January twenty-twenty-four will go up another approximately fifty, five point six percent. So January twenty-twenty-four will be fourteen dollars an hour. Um, January one will be thirteen twenty-five from twelve fifty to thirteen twenty-five. So I need to make those adjustments for this lower, on the lower wage, uh, on the wage scale. And a temporary adjustment to grade one on the wage scale for the town.
Well, there's a good chance the board might get an increase.
Or at least a hand return.
That's, that's right. All right, anyone else that heard the good of the town? Harry Dunn?
So were they, are we closed here in the offices? Probably in my name.
All right, meeting adjourned.